With some variations of with other departments and offices. It's recommended to prove the annual stipends for the judges prosecutor and the auditor per statute. Superior Court lost a grant or shortfalls in a grant that they were paying. A probation officer and a drug court coordinator recommended to the county to pick up the shortfalls. EMA director, office if you will. Salary increase is recommended as as presented. Clerk's office. There was a request to increase the election board members from eighty to ninety dollars. Surveyor's office is recommended to give deputy surveyor a two dollar increase for an increase in duties and certifications that he received. Highway department. Do you want me to go through it? Pretty much we're going with what he was as he presented in his budget. The reorganization and wage changes for those positions. Public defender's office. It was recommended that instead of giving them another person, clerk if you will, to bring the clerk's pay which is actually a paralegal up to a paralegal pay and then so they'll have two paralegals with no additional employees. I'm gonna leave the health firm for last. I think they are last. Okay. You pretty much how this is gonna go. No supplemental increase. The three percent increase is not gonna be added to their supplemental pay, which is line eleven sixty one. Three employees, the HFI coordinator, school health liaison, and the public's health specialist, those are out of eleven sixty one, but those are their only salary. It's not a supplemental. So those will increase with the three percent. That's pretty much it. Then anything else is as presented. Any questions?
Thank you for doing this.
Karen, Karen and Kevin were a lot of help, especially Karen.
Thank you.
Questions?
Lots of questions.
I appreciate the time that you guys put into it. And I know these recommendations aren't always easy, but it has to be done and saves us. Let you dig into it and hopefully get to where it needs to be. We appreciate that.
If I may, Mr. President, I appreciate this work. One of my real concerns, as I voiced last month in our meeting, is the impact that Senate Bill One is gonna have. And I realize the General Assembly will be meeting again. There will be changes. But we have to deal with the realities of what we have now. And my concern has been related to additional employees. We may be fine adding them this year and then in another year find ourselves in a very embarrassing position because we can't fund them. And I believe it's wisdom to exercise caution this year until we really see where things are. And I so I appreciate the work of the committee and what you've done because this has been a major concern of mine, as I said. I don't know of anything that has been quite as unsettling as the year we had to adopt a budget for the future year when our current year hadn't even budget hadn't even been approved by the state. And we're facing monumental changes with Senate Bill One. And I am extremely concerned about where we're going to be. So thank you for the opportunity to speak my concerns.
Well put. I think that's a concern of all of us up here is to proceed cautiously now so that we're prepared for the future.
Was in the recommendation, were there any recommended new employees? Because I didn't hear you really mention any new employees.
No, no. I think I said at the start, no new employees.
Yeah, and that was in the email.
So I guess as far as budgets go. Do you want to just walk through them again like we did before and see if there's questions?
The one question that I had relates to ARC opportunities. That doesn't affect our budget and they have asked for an increase. And they're providing a very valuable service to the committee. As I said, their increase, it's a basically fifteen thousand dollar increase they're asking for. Fourteen point six. Yeah, fourteen thousand six hundred in increase.
And the increase in the proposed budget is just under ten.
So I would support granting that.
Harold, I only show it going from for the twenty twenty five was one hundred eighty five thousand four hundred. I should go into one ninety four.
Yes, I misspoke because I I looked at the wrong column, so it's not.
It's like nine thousand two hundred and seventy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for catching that.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I was looking at too many small numbers.
So you'd like to see that raised?
I'd like to see that approved, that amount approved.
That's on here.
That's on here.
As presented, okay. Is there anything as presented here that anyone questions?
Since ARC is in there, I'll abstain.
Just so you know, we're not voting today because it's approved next month. This is just the hearing.
You can still abstain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until next month.
So I guess the next in the workbook is the Superior Court. Is there any questions there? All right, if there's nothing on Superior Court other than what's presented, Park and Recreation.
Attend the park board meetings. I might just like to say, I think for the parks that we have in this county, they do a phenomenal job with what we have and I don't see anything out of line in their requests.
Thank you. All right, next is the Highway Department.
They asked for an increase in dust control. But they cut in other areas like seasonal labor.
I think there was a request for a change in the office staffing and the way it is labeled. I know we've been very actively engaging in improving the roads in the county. It's taken a lot of money. That's probably gonna have to slow down as we move through the next few years here to see where things are going. So the workload will probably be a little bit less on the Highway Department because the funding is probably gonna be a little bit less than it has been the past few years because of the push that we put and the money we sank into that. Unless we feel that we can move forward the way we have been. I appreciate what the Highway has done with the money that we've given them to make great progress on the roads. Hope that we can keep doing that, but there may be a slowdown period here for a few years till we know exactly what the state's gonna be doing.
So what are our feelings on the the original line item was for a bookkeeper and being transferred to office manager?
With their changes, they didn't increase their budget any.
No, no.
They just moved the.
Moved it around.
I think it looks good and they are doing a good job.
Agreed.
All right, so as presented, the next is the Circuit Court. I think the change in budget there mainly is just employees. I think the budget itself was held. Okay, next be the Sheriff's Department.
This is one of the ones that changed from the initial presentation. I gave everybody this sheet that shows changes, so. There's a couple of positions left off. They're not new positions. They were just left off the budgeting.
So any comments on the sheriff's budget?
Nope.
All right, then we'll move to the Emergency Management.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna back you up just a little bit. Part of the sheriff's is the communications budget. We did have to make a change. The state funding on statewide nine one one has not increased for years. And as the wages get higher, we had to move some of the benefits from statewide, which is Fund one two two two, over to County General. So we did have a slight increase in the initial presentation once we did analysis of what the expected balances would be. Sorry.
No, thank you, Kevin. So back to emergency management, anything there?
I don't think there was any major changes there. The committee approved his salary increase.
So that would be the exception to the three percent.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, because I remember from the presentation, looking at what other counties are paying and what we're paying significantly less.
So for our size counties, the EMA position will pay towards the top. But most of those counties have three or four employees.
Mm hmm.
Which we're bills doing is one. So that higher pay is appreciated because it saves on the other people and the other benefits. As long as Bill can keep doing what he's doing, thank you.
And I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong there, Bill, your reimbursement has increased. Am I correct?
Correct. It just moved to thirty five thousand. Up to thirty five thousand now.
Okay. Yeah, it was at thirty. Now it's at thirty five, so that helps too. All right, next is the Clerk's Budget. And on those, the salary increases would be at three percent. The election board changes was recommended. So other than the salaries, it would be what was presented. Okay, next is the Surveyor's Office.
I'm gonna back you up for just a minute. Back to the clerk. So on the stipends, it's not listed, the ones that you have on here, but there is a stipend for the clerk that's in there that's granted on general election years. I just wanted to add that that's in there. It's in our budget already.
Right.
Just to make sure you're aware of that.
If you could add that for me.
Thank you.
Okay, so the surveyor, we did increase the deputy surveyor salary.
Correct.
Other than that, three percent on the salaries. Everything fairly steady down through. Is there any questions there? All right, next is the Plan Commission.
Pretty much even keel too.
Yes. And again, I'd like to thank Robbie for doing the floodplain administrator. We do appreciate that, having you be able to do it instead of hiring extra help. Thank you very much. All right, redevelopment commission, pretty much as presented. Pretty cut and dry on that. Soil and water.
I also attend their meetings and I know they worked really hard to look at their accounts and cut where they could, like so many of the department heads that we asked them to do. But it's interesting to listen to their reports on the public outreach that they are starting, just how much activity and how much communication they do have with school programs and people going out to Pargill. And so I don't see anything in their recommendations that causes concern for me.
All right, thank you.
He had asked for an additional prosecutor. I did. I did meet with them. I think there is a need. But if we grant this, it also means that the current employee who is doing some of this, like the ticket, not the ticket clerk, I'm not seeing it right here. But it would mean essentially a new employee for us, which is not part of the recommendation. And I recall that he talked about there are five public defenders and three prosecutors. Again, my concern is where are we going to be down the road? And we continue to fund positions.
Public defenders, there's five, but they are just contracted. So they're full-time employees. Prosecutor's Office are full-time employees. And I think what we're seeing now is what we had actually hoped for is some of those cases that are sitting in jail for one, two, three years are getting pushed in and getting taken care of. So I think what, I don't know everything, but it seems to me that there's gonna be a glut right now as they push through those one, two, and three-year-old cases. Once they get that under control, it's gonna go right back to where it has been. If there's a new employee granted, what's their thoughts when we want to take it away next year or the year after? What's the best mode of action? I'd like some input there.
It was brought up that they had a couple jury trials coming up. But based on what I saw in the previous budgets, the jury pay sure isn't being spent very much. So how many trials are we really having? Maybe we have two or three right now that have kind of come to a head. But throughout the year, are there, how many trials do we have throughout the year? And has there been an increase or again, is it just this little glitch in the system because we got two or three that they've gotta go to a jury trial? But there hasn't been a lot spent out of the jury pays.
That I don't know. Prosecutor is here if you want him to speak.
Yeah, we're actually doing the trials, so I can't speak to the fact that it doesn't look like there's an increase. Just Wednesday, I was here till seven thirty for the jury trial that we had that day. So we are regularly having these jury trials.
Travis, can you come up so that, sorry, because of the Zoom?
We are having the jury trials. Wednesday, I was here till seven thirty for a jury trial. We've got another one coming up in two weeks that is going to go. We've got another one after that in the next three weeks that is going to go. We have been operating at under the amount needed, not just this last year, but the year before that as well, back to two thousand and nineteen when the IPAC did their study. So even if it returned back and passed the bulge, it would return back to we're still under the amount that's recommended and not just by one, by, they say, two point six. So the additional funding to help cover, I was and still am willing to pay out of deferral funds or. So, yeah.
So on, my explanation is that a concept that is plausible? Will we see this push through and then things get back to normal?
So if there's a bulge right now, the normal, we're still behind. And and that's looking at, if you wanted to look at the easiest measurement, the five public defenders. We we're doing more than the public defenders with less guys and guys, female as well. But we've got child support. We have the other requirements of the meetings and the boards that we have to sit on and sit through. There's so much more that we're doing that the public defenders don't have to. So even if we pass this little bit of a bulge, if it is, it would return back to us being understaffed.
Right.
And and our ability to help in in other areas, it'll it'll have to take a backseat because I'm gonna have to shift everything to the criminal side. I think the the consequences of not doing that are far too great. This is this is the output of what we're looking at. I mean, it's, we have to do our best job there. I think the stakes are too high.
So if you shift to the criminal side to handle this, that takes away from child support side?
It it takes away from everything. Child support side, assisting with weights and measures, other ordinance enforcements that we're doing as well. So you're you're gonna see costs come back in in other areas.
What involvement do you have in weights and measures?
Assisting with assisting with enforcement when there's, if there's somebody in the county that isn't getting on board, isn't updating their scales, we come in and we usually use all our tools to try to get enforcement. We've had success. There were two large ones that we've done. We've had success. There were two large ones that we've done. We've had success and, and got enforcement almost immediately.
While Travis.
New program we have with the public defenders has made an impact in your office with more cases or how has that affected your office?
So I hope to one day see a benefit from creating the public defenders office because I, I think that it should be a benefit to our county. It is not the benefit that it was sold to us. The reason we're in more trials is because of the, the public defenders office at this point. And so we have five on staff there and more trials, so it's pulling more on us. And it hasn't increased our efficiency yet. I think it can in the future and I, I would love to see that implemented at any time now. But it has not created the efficiencies. And I, and I hope once they're in the justice building, maybe it'll be easier for them to meet with us to resolve some of these cases, but we've yet to have them schedule a meeting.
So I heard a word from them last meeting and it was strategizing. So it didn't give me a warm fuzzy feeling when I heard that.
If their strategy, which is to, to try more cases and to try more issues and suppression hearings along the way, then they are being effective at that. If their strategy is not to meet with us to resolve cases, again, they're being effective with that. That is, seems to be their strategy and for our purposes, it is. It's taking a toll on our office and it is not increasing the efficiency that the matters are being resolved. So if that's their strategy, then they're knocking it out of the park. And, and I, I bit my tongue through the last meeting when efficiency was brought up. I, I look forward to the day that I can say, yes, it is increasing the efficiency of the resolution of our cases.
Is there any more questions for Travis while he's up here?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
So the recommendation of the salary committee is no new employees. That's the recommendation. If we feel that we need to do something different, we can do that. But right now, that's where it's at. I for one don't want to see prosecution be let go and focus on one area and not be able to cover them all. But we also have changes coming down the road that financially we have to be aware of.
Looks like.
What percentage of the, of this new position could be funded out of deferral funds?
Travis.
Well, that, that was a part of.
So it is a, a unique position. It is kind of odd, the, the swapping in of, of one and the pulling and the removing off when this is a position that is reimbursable. And, and so looking at the, I guess the, the cost that would be moved to the county to pick up, that is the portion of the amount that I was wanting to cover out of deferral funds so that it essentially wouldn't be a cost on the county at all. So it'd be an, an even wash on the, the shift that the county would feel. If I pick up the extra 30 to 40, then it would be a, really a, a break even for the county. And it would be a chance for us to at least try to break even on our workload.
Are those deferral funds now being used to supplement some of the other salaries?
To a portion, yes. Yes. Not, not near the, the 30 to 40 that we'd be looking at and, and being able to, to cover. And we could cover that for not just the upcoming cycle, but we could cover that for the next cycle as well, so that it wouldn't be something that would immediately be dropped back onto the county.
So if we were to do something for a new employee, could you focus your efforts on the cases that are the most important and need to be focused on and keep up? I mean, how much of a load is this going to take off of you and give you the ability to do the cases that need to be done, address the ones that?
This, this would be an, an absolute breakthrough in that ability. It, it really would be because at this point in time, we've been operating without and having to put what I think are still important, not as important, but matters to the side so that we can focus on what, what I think is the most important. And, and that's why I, I thought it was required for me to help find a way for the county to do that, especially in the conditions that we have coming. And, and that's really why I, I made that proposal because I think it's important enough to our county that I find a way to pitch in and, and shoulder some of that.
For quite a while now, I was under the impression, I mean, not really wanting to hire another employee, but I'm, after listening to Travis, I'm kind of changing my idea now, maybe to get these cases moving, try to, I think we need to consider this now.
Well, we really need to be able to prosecute the cases that need prosecutor in this county. I hate to see things get let go. It's kind of our responsibility on funding.
You've got an extremely difficult job with, with the funding, especially with everything coming in. And that's, that's really why I tried to present an option that would, wouldn't be, I guess, a headache for you in trying to, to move forward because yes, the, the unknowns are extremely potential there.
But it's also cost us for these people, some of them sitting in our jail for
Sure.
years. It's no win situation, really.
Do we have a lot of prisoners that are awaiting trial for long periods of time?
So.
Or with the bonding that we have now, are they able to get out? I remember back years ago when we would have somebody, we'd get a jail list and there would be people on there awaiting trial for two years. Do we have people that are awaiting trial that long?
So there, I, I would say generally speaking, no, not, not as many. There are some that the bond is, is placed at, at a level where they, they just realistically, they think their odds going to trial and the eventual resolution of the case are that they shouldn't bond. And that's the unfortunate part is there are some of these cases that we can resolve and that should be resolved by plea. We just, we just can't get assistance to help get them resolved on the other end.
Is there anything that the county council could do to combat the strategy, if you will, of the new public defenders office? Because I, that strategy, that, to be honest, that scared me when I heard that in our last meeting. You've got all these guys putting their heads together to, I, I see that as a way to get you to lower plea bargains and, and have them more palatable to the, the defenders and everything else and.
I, I, I agree. I think you're right. And for example, this last trial that we had on Wednesday, that's exactly what the request was. They, in that case, and, and just to keep any names or anything else out of it, the original plea proposal that I made way earlier to resolve the case before any suppression hearing, before that, before the midway appeal was taken, before we appeared for numerous final pre-trial conferences that were then pushed out. The request, three days before trial, was for me to go back to my original plea proposal. That's set, that's gone. You're not getting that. No, I would go to trial and that's why we went to trial. But that was a, a level two felony, so a pretty high felony. Defendant doesn't show up. We still do the trial because it's time to get it done. I'm not going to ask to have it continued for a later date. We need to move forward. We need to get this wrapped up, so. And successful, by the way.
Any more questions for Travis? All right, thank you, Travis.
Right here if you need.
Thank you.
So what's the thoughts on any changes on the salary recommendation at this point or do you want to keep going?
Well, my recommendation at the point of the salary and wage committee is no additional employees because I understand what Travis is saying about the five public defenders, but they just started in January. So they're eight months in. To me, it's just a little early, I think, to know how that workload is going to look. You know, obviously, like you said, it's, there's probably going to be a push through and then maybe that L-shaped curve is going to come back down. And I guess for me, I just thought we needed a little, I needed a little more information to know what the normal is going to look like. So that was why I was, my recommendation from the salary and wage committee. Just so you understand that.
I guess where I was coming from is two things. One, by the numbers, they are down in, in terms of prosecutors that they need. And then you've got the increase with five public defenders and the scary scenario that Michael's talking about. So my leanings had been, especially since two-thirds of the salary is reimbursed by the state and he's willing to cover the other out of deferral money. My leanings were that we should do this. That's where I'm at. But I'm only one voice of seven.
Would there be a way that we could tie the, the new position to that deferral fund and if there was a time, you know, I think that fund balance is healthy, but we all know how that works. You know, a couple of years from now, it couldn't, it might not be. Can we tie that, this additional position to be paid from deferral and if at some point that isn't feasible, we can revisit that versus, you know, putting it on county general. I think if we could make it live within the deferral fund, I'm, I'm I'm on board with that.
Ryan, are you talking about supporting it 100% out of deferral? I don't think that's what Travis is saying.
No, I'm saying supporting it, obviously the, the, the county's portion, obviously the state's covering two-thirds of it or whatever, but the county's portion, I think, I thought, my understanding was he wanted to cover the, the county's portion through deferral or is he saying 30 or 40% of that?
Well, state funding is two-thirds.
Right.
So we have to spend that out first, then we get that reimbursed. And he was going to cover the, the one-third out of deferral.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm on board with that. I'm just saying if at some point, three years from now, the deferral fund is non-existent or below what could, could fund that, I think then we can revisit that position and, and decide from there. But I, I think as long as the balance is healthy enough, I, I'm good with that.
What would that do to your clerical staff with an additional prosecutor?
So that, I, I guess, I can, I can hop in that to answer the kind of the, the first question. I, I think in our proposal for a budget every year, when we come back, we could give an accounting for the deferral funds and whether or not it was in a position to, to cover that or if we were asking that it be covered by the county. That would be something that we could address on a yearly basis. That way you felt more comfortable knowing where that was moving forward. With, with regard to our other staff, as far as the administrative portion, this, the, the kind of work that they would be doing then, this would be mostly attorney-prepared documents that would be filed for child support and child support purposes. It's not going to necessarily increase any of the, I guess, new enrollees onto the child support program or anything like that. It would just translate to kind of a, a moving over of this attorney to the criminal side, which we have adequate staff to be able to handle that. The, the pleadings that would be generated from this.
Travis, I just want to make sure I understand the numbers. So you have somebody right now that's doing 40% child support. Is that correct? And that's a subject to, or part of that reimbursement of that portion of their wages.
Correct.
So I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. So that person would all go 100% to prosecutor. So the 40% there, the county would have to pick up. But then you'd get a new person that would be 100% as part of this reimbursement, two-thirds, one-third.
Correct, correct. So there's a, a much larger portion of the, of that position that's covered by the two-thirds. But moving that person that is currently now getting the 40% over to criminal would create a, a loss of about, I think approximately 30 to 33, something along those lines in the amount that the county would have to pick up in order to get that person on this. So that's why I'm looking to, to cover that portion.
But would you end up then, this is the way I'm thinking, I just want to make sure. So you would end up with the person that's doing 40% child support would now be doing, they'd do another 40% toward criminal.
Correct.
And the new person would be child support. So in a sense, we'd get another 60% of child support help. Right? If one person is doing 40%.
Sure.
So you'd, you'd really get a partial extra help in criminal and partial, a part extra help in child support.
Correct.
It's not one new prosecutor, you're getting.
It's, it's a little, it would be basically, that, that's a correct way of thinking about it, a little bump to each of those sides. Yeah.
So you'd only be getting partial additional in both of those areas, not all criminal or prosecuting.
Correct, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I think there are times of charm these times appear.
I can start walking back.
All right, thank you, Travis.
Thanks, Travis.
All right. So I guess we've heard what we need there. Some thoughts for it. So we'll move on. Next is the building department.
This is one of those that was decreased due to a misstated number.
Any questions, comments on the building department? All right, then we'll move to the health department. Alright, then we'll move to the Health Department.
I will say, this is another one that I attend their meetings quarterly, so not as much information coming in from them, you know, not the monthly basis, but I know Dr. Garcia has done a lot of planning on the HFI that's been decreasing, he's trying to manage his money so that he can continue that out as long as he can, so whatever I think the council can do to help them would be appreciated.
And I wanted to clarify on the two positions, I believe, that were previously funded by grants that were being moved to HFI 1161.
Was that the 3% increase?
It wasn't, it was the wage itself, they were, I believe, both part-time positions, maybe? That were previously funded by grants, like 8119 and 811.
Weren't those positions inserted to other employees as well? That what we talked about? I'm gonna find that form you gave me. Right here. Are you talking about the bottom three?
Yes, because they were previously paid by grants, and I just want to know.
Right.
I wasn't sure on recommendations, what we were doing with those.
What I'm saying is, those are the bottom three. Those positions are being filled with other current employees, correct?
I believe so. It's a split position, they do so many hours out of this fund for this, so many hours.
In a sense, they'd be supplemental.
No, it's not like this is their regular pay, and they're getting more on top of it, it's, they get full pay so many hours from this fund, full pay so many hours for this fund to make up a position. This one is just a part-time position that was all paid from the grant, not shared with any other position, this one is the same. This one was a split one.
So if they're not supplemental, then?
It's not like an extra $2, an extra $1.59, it's a full wage for a set number of hours.
Right. Yeah.
Just wasn't sure where you came on, I don't know, so.
Were those paid from the HFI?
Correct.
They were not originally, they were paid from some other grants that have gone away, now they're being moved to HFI, and I just wanted to clarify that we were doing that, because sometimes we say when the grant goes away, the position goes away, so. Are we moving them to HFI?
So you're asking if we're gonna allow that to be put into the HFI?
That is correct.
Is there enough funding in the HFI?
My question. If there's enough in that 1161, I don't see a problem in it.
Still grant money, or money that's not general.
Correct.
So then on those, it would be the 3%, even though you have zero here, because they're not really supplemental.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
This is why I don't throw anything away.
Alright, any more questions on the health budget? Alright, next would be extension.
I didn't see anything there, and Purdue is asking for a 3%, which is right in line with what we're looking at.
Next on the list is the Coroner Budget.
He didn't ask for anything either.
And Veteran Service.
That's, that's the same.
Same.
He's doing a great job.
And the Maintenance.
That is one of those we increased slightly, moved up his utilities.
Right, I had a note here.
Thanks, Nipsco.
Increased by 20,000, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, he had requested 140, and that's been adjusted to 160. Yeah, thanks, Nipsco.
Okay. Then next is the Assessor.
There was a decrease on this one due to changing a full-time position to part-time. Did some calculation on the wages, so this one came down a little bit.
Right. Right, next is Information Technology, IT.
I noticed he didn't increase his own salary by 3%, did we want to do that anyway?
Well, if it's all salaries, it wouldn't encompass his too.
Okay. Get that Kathy?
Yep. And then the Commissioners, that's an up to salary for the Department Heads, the Commissioners could not do, or whatever, but that's a.
Okay, and GIS.
The only increase there was, is in salaries.
Yeah.
That I'm seeing.
And the Recorder. Nothing there? Alright, the Treasurer.
Nothing there either.
Council?
That's you.
Yep. Okay. Then, we reach the Public Defender Board.
Have we heard that we're getting reimbursed over the 10-year period now, is that what?
Yes.
And have we, how does that get submitted, and has it been approved? I don't know who I'm asking the question of, but.
I don't see him here.
I was here.
There's a, they have an admin assistant that submits for reimbursement, so I'm assuming that's going to be submitted with that, I can follow up with them to make sure.
Because then, something I read somewhere, that there has to be a rent comparison to make sure that we're not being reimbursed above and beyond the rent in the area, and there's a lot of calculations that go into that reimbursement, that, I don't know, I sat through those meetings, I don't ever remember hearing that either. Just, we get reimbursed, there wasn't a 10-year plan, or any of that, I just, that really ticks me off, that we expended, I don't know how much the renovations are, $200,000, $300,000? We did that and walked into that with the intent of being reimbursed, there was no 10-year plan. Seems like we're at Walmart layaway, you know? Just, nobody said that. Did any of you guys ever remember anybody saying that?
No. I did have a note that reimbursement was 40% on certain things, but the average is turning out to be 30 to 31%. That's actually coming back.
Of the budget. But no, I'm talking about the.
The renovations, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard no 10-year plan.
Yeah.
And I believe Mr. Hanson is checking into what needs to be submitted for the reimbursement, but my, my understanding from him is that it is a 10-year.
Wow.
Yeah, I didn't hear that ahead of time.
It just doesn't sit well at all.
Well, that whole position didn't turn out the way it was supposed to, I don't think, in my opinion.
My only consolation is that, for years and years, we were pushed to do this, and we were able to avoid it until now. So that tempers with some of my frustrations.
Alright. So as far as the budget goes, we'll move to Convention and Visitors Bureau. Is there any questions there? Alright, moving on, we've got the Auditor. 126, any questions? Guess you're off the hook, Kathy. Last. Is the lit, do we need to do anything there? Economic Development.
The Economic Development Committee does need to come up with a new capital improvement plan, and our plan runs through the end of 25. So they'll be meeting in the next coming months to devise the plan for the next five years. Up to five years. So if you have recommendations for them, what you would like to see, edit money spent on roads, anything, I'm sure the committee would appreciate some input on that. Off the top of my head, I think the committee is Harry, and there's somebody from Councils, is it you, Mike?
That's me.
You, okay. So, they would appreciate your recommendations on what you'd like to see on the capital improvement plan.
I think that covers everything on the budget. Is there any discussions we need to have? Any thoughts? Any public comments? Alright, at this time, I'll close the public hearing on the 2026 budget. Thank you. Alright, so, next on the agenda is Transfers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Transfers. Any discussion? Alright Kathy, can you do a vote for us?
Karen Eagleson? Yes. Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
Ryan Riegsacker?
Yes.
Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Jim Young?
Yes.
Jeff Brill?
Yes.
Jeff Campos?
Yes.
Alright, next is Additional Appropriations.
On these, a request has come from, it's not on here, it's on, it's on for the next month, so you need to have the discussion this, no, we put it in the budget for next year, that's what it was.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm getting myself distracted here. Faren, she has a request on for use of funds, so we have put it into two places in the budget for next year. So you can decide what you want to do. Instead of doing an additional this year and carrying it into next year, we'll just budget it for next year, but it's advertised both in major moves, and I believe edits. Is that what we discussed?
I don't remember.
That's what was on the notes.
On the note, okay.
Yeah.
All written down in the notes.
So, do you want that now, or do you want to do the additionals? I'm sorry, I distracted your meeting.
Let's just take a five-minute break right now. Give you time to prepare, and then we'll resume in five minutes. Thank you.
Excellent.
I'm. 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 I'm.
And next on the list. Sern.
Um, so I am coming before you to request 976,503 and 10 cents. That is based off my number running. I am looking at applying for community crossings grant 2026-1. They have changed it due to state funding. It's normally in January where, when we would apply, January and July. They are bumping next year's up to October of this year. And then next year's 2027-1 application will be in July. Lots of things have changed. They did move the match back down to a million. So we are looking at seven and a quarter miles. You have them in front of you. Each of these roads are rated for PESA rating appropriately for the treatment that we are proposing. The road ratings are three or four, which puts it into the structural overlay would be the best solution to maintain the roadway. We are looking at a two and a half inch overlay and that would have the 20% slag in the mix. We have been doing that now for a couple of years. It helps with the horseshoes. And then two-foot shoulders and paint striping. My numbers came out to 1,976,503 and 10 cents. As I told you before, that was with double striping. The shoulder numbers are a little heavy. And then this was a 10% on one of our projects that was awarded this year. That way the numbers are close. But we have hired a consultant to help with the bid package once the grant opens in October. So the state will take it in for review. If they award it, they want to turn it around within three months, I believe, maybe two, very shortly after. And then we would not start work until next summer. And as I noted on the paper, the first segment that's on there, I would want to start it after June 1st and have it substantially done before August 1st. And then the no work between July number to number is fair. I don't, I'd have to look and see what fair numbers are.
Okay.
We wouldn't want to congest it too much.
You'd have, you'd know if you were approved before the end of the year?
We wouldn't know if we would get the grant by the end of the year.
Would you have it out for bid before the end of the year?
It all depends. I don't know, and that didn't state when their turnaround time was. So we never really know. It's just like, here, you're awarded, go fast. Usually they're about two months, so hopefully. So putting it in next year's budget makes total sense, is what I'm thinking. Cause we wouldn't even begin work until next year anyway. Outside of bidding.
So it's for, let everybody know, it is not in the budget for next year for advertising purposes. It got missed.
Yes.
So we'll have to do an additional. And we can do an additional as soon as October if you determine you want to do this and tell me where you want to advertise. So she would, we would, you would approve it, potentially approve it in October and that would give her enough time to submit her application with commissioners approving the expenditure. If it doesn't get awarded before the end of the year, then that appropriation would go away and she'd come back and ask the additional again in '26.
So we've been focused on improving the roads, getting the roads in shape. Here's a community crossing opportunity. It's going to cost us just shy of a million dollars. We can take it out of major moves money. We can take it out of edit money. I want some thoughts and some feelings from you guys.
Split it?
We can split it, can't we Kathy?
Yes.
I could see it taking out edit, so.
I was thinking edit.
Okay, so Kathy, could you advertise that for edit?
Advertise and edit for your next meeting.
All right, okay.
Okay, so I'll be back. Lucky y'all.
All right, next is additional appropriations. Is there some discussion on that?
Yes.
Let's take them individually. So first, let's look at the cum cap development. It's a sheriff's vehicle. I think that's the insurance money to go towards the vehicle. Questions, issues?
No.
I would entertain a motion, we'll do them one at a time, too.
Make a motion to approve that request.
I'll question it then.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the cum cap development for the sheriff's vehicle. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
Ryan Riecksecker?
Yes.
Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Jim Young?
Yes.
Jeff Brill?
Yes.
Jeff Campos?
Yes.
Karen Eagleson?
Yes.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve the $11,969 for South Milford.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve $11,969 for South Milford. Any discussion? Kathy?
Ryan Riecksecker?
Yes.
Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Jim Young?
Yes.
Jeff Brill?
Yes.
Jeff Campos?
Yes.
Karen Eagleson?
Yes.
Uh, Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
All right. Next is request from the public defender for appellate expenses of $12,000. We received a letter to go with that.
I read that letter and it says might need, might, something to that effect. Am I correct?
Yes.
In case.
Just in case, yeah. Yeah.
So perhaps it'd be a better time to come when it's needed rather than we might need this down the road and give it to us now? Is that a thought?
My thought.
Motion to deny.
Second.
It's been moved, a motion to deny the additional appropriation for $12,000 for the public defender. Is there any discussion? All right, Kathy.
Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Jim Young?
Yes.
Yes, to deny, yeah, it's hard. Jeff Brill?
Yes.
Jeff Campos?
Yes.
Karen Eagleson?
Yes.
Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
Ryan Riecksecker?
Yes.
All right. How do you want to handle signatures on this? Does this need reprint?
Uh, it does need to be reprinted.
All right, next on the agenda is legal claims, Harold.
All right, again, we met with legal counsel and have reviewed all of the legal item, legal claims item by item. There are a number that are being paid out of different funds or split. I can tell you of the $26,009, $9,244 are related to litigation. Again, several of us met, reviewed these, and I would make a motion that we approve payment. These are July bills that are presented today and your, pretty much said August, but it is today. So motion to approve payment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve payment of the legal bills. Kathy?
Jim Young?
Yes.
Jeff Brill?
Yes.
Jeff Campos?
Yes.
Karen Eagleson?
Yes.
Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
Ryan Riecksecker?
Yes.
Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Right, legal bills were approved. Okay, we have the minutes from the regular session on August 11th. And also the joint session on August 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the regular session minutes from August 11th and the special joint session minutes from August 11th. Any discussion? Okay, Kathy?
Jeff Brill?
Yes.
Jeff Campos?
Yes.
Karen Eagleson?
Yes.
Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
Ryan Riecksecker?
Yes.
Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Jim Young?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Is there anything else to come before the council this morning? Sure.
Yeah, good morning. I had two bills that came up and I will cover these, but they, they went above our $5,000 that we talked about. So the first one I have is WSM that was finishing when our air handler went down. So we had to cover bearings and a whole bunch of parts and that was $6,563. And the second one was for SAS and our main camera out front got hit by lightning. So we had to get that one taken care of so we'd have our security out front. And that one was right at 5,300. So again, I can get these covered, but I wanted to bring them to your attention since they were over our $5,000.
Is there an insurance claim that can be done on the camera with lightning strike?
We, we can check through them. SAS fixed that for us and there was a couple of issues there. It had a surge protector on it. We had, actually added another one so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall on us if, if we got hit by lightning again, so. But we can, we can check on that. Um, that's an old camera.
I don't know, do we, what our deductible is, it's probably more than.
Probably 10.
I think it's 25 on buildings, so I'm not sure with electronics if it would be less, we can check.
Right. And it, it, like I said, at the $5,300, I will, I'll have that covered out of commissary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Did he, did you need a vote on that or you just need to notify them that you're spending?
I'm just letting Nelson's real to $5,000.
Okay, all right.
Right, is there anything else to come before the council at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Kathy, can you?
Jeff Campos?
Yes.
Karen Eagleson?
Yes.
Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
Ryan Riecksecker?
Yes.
Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Jim Young?
Yes.
Jeff Brill?
Yes.
I'm, don't leave, I'm going to get this fixed, I'll have you sign.